Okay, here we go. Let's see. Okay, we are live and recording on YouTube. So whenever you are ready, Lynn, and let's not forget to mute our mics.
Yes, everybody else mute, please, unless you're talking. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our March 16, 2021 Tree Board. Again, as you see, we're meeting virtually. Hopefully, next month, we will be in person again. We're all anxious to do that. But in the meantime, we're making do. I wanted to, because this is open to the public, I am required to read this statement from Governor Lee. As you know, Governor Lee issued Executive Order 16 on March 16 and extended its provisions by Executive Order 34 on May 6, Executive Order 51 on June 29, Executive Order 60 on August 28, Order 65 on October 28, and Executive Order 71 on December 22. These orders were issued to ensure that government continues to function openly and transparently during the COVID-19 emergency while taking appropriate measures to protect the health and safety of citizens and government officials. In his orders, Governor Lee emphasized that in the interest of limiting the community's spread of COVID-19, private and governmental entities of all types should eliminate large public gatherings and conduct business remotely by electronic means to the greatest extent possible. The orders provide that governments may meet to conduct essential business by electronic means when the governing body determines that doing so is necessary to protect citizens. COVID continues to spread across the state and Williamson County. Therefore, the city has determined that in the interest of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans and the citizens of Brentwood, it is necessary for the Tree Board to meet partially electronically rather than in person. We have posted the link for public viewing on the city's website and social media pages, and we have disseminated the same to the media. Is there any objection by the commission? Seeing none, we will proceed with our meeting in accordance with the state of Tennessee's Governor Executive Orders. Thank you, everyone, for your patience in my reading that. So first of all, before we review our February minutes, I would like to welcome our new board members, John O'Brien. John, wave your hand. And I know Sam had a meeting, our other board member, he was on, he said he could possibly do a meeting in his car, but I do not see him on the call. So I'm assuming he's not able to meet with us, but he is another one of our new members. So welcome, welcome, John and Sam to our board, and we look forward to working with you. And we will give you lots of work to do. We promise, promise, a lot of tree work. Also, on the agenda, as you see, we're going to review the minutes of February. And has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
And who is that? Who's motioning?
John O'Brien.
Okay. John motioned to approve. Is there a second?
I second that. John Vitucci.
John Vitucci seconded. If there's no objections or no corrections addition to the minutes, the minutes pass. Wait, I will say that there is one correction. The minutes reflect that Jared Peters was absent. Jared is no longer on the board, so we can make sure, Brian, when you do the minutes this time, that you do not report him absent. And then also, Sandy is also not on the board anymore, both of them. The minutes are passed as corrected. Arbor Day planning for the virtual event, this is the big thing. I think we are at the top of the list in the state for doing this virtual week. So Deanna, thank you so much for kind of egging us on and really starting the ball whirling so we could do this. So if we will, let's go through each day, and we will see if there's any changes, anything we need to do. The first thing I did want to tell you is that we do have more than 300 trees, which is very exciting. Bartlett said that they are going, Bartlett Tree Experts said they are going to bring 300 trees. I do not know what the species of trees are. And I know Middle Tennessee Electric is also going to bring some trees. So we are going to have plenty of trees there. I would ask you, Erin had suggested she's going to bring the polymer gel and buckets so that we can dip the trees prior to giving them to the people that are going to, hordes of people that are going to come and collect these trees. If you all have newspapers at home, would you bring your newspapers? Because we are going to just dip that tree and then wrap it in a couple sheets of newspaper and give it to the person. So just bring your newspapers. And everybody, if you will be at the library on Sunday, this is the 21st, we're going to do the distribution from 1:00 to 4:00. So if you could all be there a little bit earlier than that, by about 12:30, that would be great.
Lynn?
Yes.
I think I'll have the trees already in the buckets, so we'll just have to pull one out.
Okay.
And are we supposed to be setting up with any kind of tables or chairs or anything like that? And are we going to be outside in the front?
Yeah. Is Susan on the call?
Hello. Yes, I am. Hello, everybody.
Okay, hi, Susan.
So the library doesn't really open till 1:00, but if you'd like, I can meet you there. You need to, you know, take a break before you start or something like that, or if you need anything at all, like tables. There's benches out there at the entrance if that's where you guys are going to be, but what would you like for a setup?
Erin, what would you suggest?
Well, I think that we need a couple tables that we're going to have a surface to wrap trees on. I think that there's a lot of people there, you know, six or eight or 10 or whoever, I think that there'd be someplace to sit. So I don't know what else. What do you all think?
And are we going to have any of the handouts, Erin? You know, we had a bunch of things that we had. We could have an extra table to set those handouts on.
You tell me what you want me to bring. I wasn't planning on bringing anything except trees, but I have a lot of handouts from the Arbor Day Foundation that we bought last year to distribute. I don't have a handout right now that says, this is how you plant a tree. So, you know, let me know now. Everybody needs to work on that.
I would say any literature that you might have. Yeah.
I was going to say, we also have those Emerald Ash Bore pamphlets that we had created a while ago. I could try to get a few of those.
So Susan, so if we can have like some two or three tables and some chairs out there, and possibly, you know, if you could have us be able to use the restroom facilities by 12:30 in case we need to before the event starts.
Will do.
All right, thank you. Okay, Deanna, day one.
Yes, so day one is the kickoff. Like we just discussed, see everyone who can be there Sunday at 12:30 at the library to pass out trees. We have 1:00 to 4:00, but I'm guessing it'll probably go until the trees are out. Lynn will also be doing a Facebook Live with some other Tree Board members discussing the day, giving out trees, and then also doing a trivia question worth a $50 gift card. Also scheduled that day will be a couple of videos on Facebook and Instagram. Boy Scouts explaining how to plant a tree will be in the morning, and then also the Bartlett Tree video about the Survivor Tree Seedling Program. Those will be used that day. And then our acorn contest is already underway. And so it is, I'm not for sure how many submissions we've gotten on the back end of that. Erin might be able to elaborate. And then Monday is Kids' Day. So this will be a day focusing on kids' education with another kids' video, coloring pages, and then we do encourage everyone who participates in the coloring page to then post your colored page onto Facebook in the comments, and the top three winners will win a $25 gift card. Let's see, Tuesday is Science STEM Education Day. We thank Dane and Patty for coming out to our Brentwood field trip over at River Park with Erin's help to shoot that video. So that is already underway and done, so we appreciate them. We have a tutorial video from the library that some staff put together about a cut-out leaf art project. And then the acorn contest, again, we'll post that day. The acorn contest will post every day. And then Wednesday is Creative Arts Day. Ms. Pat from the library read a book about We Planted a Tree. Other poems about trees will be posted, and another video about the importance of Arbor Day in Brentwood. That was with Lynn Tucker and Diane Warwick, so that will post that day around noon. And then, let's see, on Thursday, Ask an Arborist Day, we will do a live Ask an Arborist Q&amp;A session. And Lynn, my mind is going blank. Who signed on for that the other day? Who's going to be our arborist?
Bartlett.
Bartlett, a representative from Bartlett's going to be the arborist. So that will be Thursday, probably around noon as well. And then Friday is our Friday Forestry Fun Day, so we will be introducing Tennesseans to urban forestry. And then we'll be doing some of our Emerald Ash Bore education posts that day, how to identify an ash tree, and then also the story that we produced with Erin and Sandy a couple of years back. And then Saturday will be our presentation at 11:00 a.m. This is basically going to be a recorded segment. We have six out of seven of the city commissioners, a part of this video with Lynn. You can kind of see the rundown there. We've introduced the contest winners, although we don't know them all yet. We have to slip those names in. We do a presentation of the Arbor Day Tree to Tommy Walsh, and then Brian Evans and Nelson Andrews finish it out with announcing the Emerald Ash Bore Education Contest. And I'm still editing that video, and whenever we have all of the winning contest names from this week, we'll slide those in, and then that will debut Saturday morning at 11:00 a.m. And so if we can encourage you all, if you have your own Facebook pages and Instagram and things like that, if we can encourage you all to share the city's resources throughout the week, that would be helpful.
Erin, what is the trivia question on that first day on Sunday? What question is set up for that? Is that the one about the, the one that you and Erin and I looked at?
Yes, Erin is familiar with the question. We may not want to reveal the answer here since it's public. But yes, the trivia question was the one Erin had come up with, and I'm not for sure if she's having some audio visual issues.
Okay.
Question that answer is open to her. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Question, Deanna. Has anybody committed to posting the week on the Neighborhood Nextdoor app? Is that possible? If not, I can post that, and it'll go to all the neighborhoods in Brentwood, roughly 12,000 houses.
Yes, so anything you can share like that on Nextdoor would be helpful. The way the city uses Nextdoor is that we post sparingly on there so that people will pay attention to our messages. So we probably won't post everything, like every post to Nextdoor, but we will definitely advertise, like, if you would like a free tree and Arbor Day kicks off on Sunday, you know, follow us on social media. We'll post something like that. But as far as each specific post, no. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yes, Lynn?
I think we lost your connection. You were talking. I did not hear you. Did everybody else hear her?
I think it was you, Lynn, that your picture went blank for a minute.
Yeah. I didn't hear at all. I didn't hear what you said.
So John basically asked if we could post on Nextdoor, and I said, you guys are free to share, there's Patty. You guys are free to share anything on Nextdoor that you'd like. As far as the city, we'll probably promote it once on Sunday, advertising it for the full week. And I did resend the information to the media this morning just to kind of keep that forefront on their minds.
Does anybody have any questions about the week?
Hey, Deanna, this is Sam.
Hi, Sam.
Hey.
Hi, Sam.
I had a question about the red bud that Garden the Babylon is going to be donating.
That's right. Where did we decide to give that away, Lynn?
Oh.
We designated it to something. Was that the acorn contest?
I thought so, yes.
Okay, so Sam, yes. At the end of the week, on Saturday morning, we will be announcing the winner of the acorn contest, and that is where the tree will be given away.
Okay. And did you want me to go ahead and, did you want me to go ahead and deliver and plant it, or should I just kind of offer it out as a prize?
Yeah, no, we'll have to figure out who's the winner of the acorn contest. So once we know that, we'll probably hook you up with that person, if you don't mind.
Okay, okay. Do you want me to bring the trees to the library or anything like that?
Erin?
Bring that tree, is he talking about?
I think it's a good prop. I always like props. I think if it's not too much trouble. But you'd have to take it back until it's given away to the individual.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Erin, do you know if we've gotten any acorn contest submissions from the back end of that website?
Some. The first, I think, were four, and Jamie set me up on a post that I can get them continuously coming in. There was about six, maybe, that came in on Saturday or Sunday, and I have one that's like four numbers off from the winning number.
Great, great.
But not a lot, you know. I'd like to see a lot more. When we were live at the library, we had hundreds by now. I think it's hard to find still, you know, with the links and things like that. If you want to find it, you'll find it.
We've been advertising the EAB contest on the front of the website, but this weekend I can switch that to the acorn contest.
And by the way, too, I wanted to say a big thank you to John Vitucci, to Nelson, who is not able to be on the call today, and to Cindy Harrison, who's one of our Tree Board members, who is not able to be on the call today. They assisted us, myself, and I didn't do too much. I just kind of stood back since my creativity is not as good as theirs. But they decorated the display case, and if anybody wants to take a look at it, it looks really, really good. Erin contributed quite a few little tree-type things, branches and twigs and acorns and moss. And so I think we did a great job in decorating that display case, which will be up for the month of March. Are there any other questions about our week? It looks like there are just a few little holes to fill, but I think we're about ready to go on it. Thank you again, Deanna, for coordinating all this. Oh, there's our picture. Yeah, yeah. And the posters were done by Jamie Lee Booker, who works for the Parks, with Erin, with the Parks Department. And we put some of the posters in the display case, and then the rest of the posters are on the big wall as if you're going to the children's library. There is a lot of tree art on that wall, and we've distributed the rest of the posters there. But please take a look at those if you haven't already. I think normally we put the kids' posters in there, but we did what we could with what we had. And I think we had some pretty nice things to add to the display case. So thank you. Thanks, Erin, for all the stuff that you brought us to do. Oh, there we are. And by the way, the two oil paintings on the top were done by Erin and her sister. So they really add their original oil paintings. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Erin, for those.
Yeah, no problem, Lynn.
Is there any other questions about the week-long celebration?
I have one question, Lynn.
Yes.
For this trivia contest, I know I had a piece of paper, and Lynn and Deanna and I went over what the trivia question is. The leaves, you know, they're not out yet, so are you going to just do this with a piece of paper and not necessarily the actual product?
I didn't understand your question.
I'll bet with you after the meeting then.
Yeah, let's just email us.
Okay.
Okay. There's no other questions about Arbor Day planning for the virtual event. Could we hear an Emerald Ash Bore Committee report from Brian? And I guess Patty and Dane are on that committee.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Patty and Dane. I mean, I don't know if you think I missed anything. I'm just looking at our minutes from our last meeting here, just to make sure I don't miss anything. We did review and approve the final EAB quiz, so that's out and running now on several locations. It was published in the Brentwood homepage. So I reached out to Kelly. I don't know yet what the participation is, but I know a lot of people have shared it. John mentioned Nextdoor the other day. I shared that on Nextdoor. I don't know what activity it calls, but you're welcome to share that link anywhere, because soon we'll randomly pick the winner. We're going to give away a gift card that's randomly for anyone that participated. We also reviewed and looked at the final draft webpage for the EAB contest, and we kicked that off. So that'll be ready to go. That'll be the dominant, if you will, webpage once we're past Arbor Day, because we announced this at the end of the Arbor Day celebration. We looked at contest rules, decided on prizes, so it's really good prizes for this. And since this is broadcast, I'll save this for Nelson and the city, we really got to thank our prize sponsors here for doing this, and that was State Volunteer Mutual Insurance Company. They put up the prize money for this, which was costing the city nothing to put this together, and it's very intense, so hopefully there's a $1,000 first prize for the best photo chosen, and then there's $500 for the most locations submitted. And there's second and third place prizes, and people can win both categories. It might submit a great tree and lots of locations. Hopefully, that produces a lot of activity. And also special thanks to James McCord. We have a mapping software. We've looked at it a little bit, but basically you can upload a picture. It allows you to move a dot and put it right, and it gives you a satellite view. So you can put it right on the tree in your front yard or wherever it is you're choosing. You can pick the actual tree that you're taking a photo of, so we have a geomap of that tree. It's pretty handy, and obviously geomaps update, but trees don't grow that fast. Luckily, the tree mapping should be better than home or street mapping, because these have been around a while. And then finally, because we have a little prize money left, we are reviewing also the idea of having t-shirts for participants, which would show the Brentwood Best Ash logo on the t-shirt. And we're actually going to meet after this call today, a little subcommittee, to just talk about t-shirts and how feasible that is, distribution with COVID, et cetera. Patty? Sorry, she's still muted. She's going to say something really great about t-shirts, but we're trying to decide about that. But we'll talk about that. That's a really subcommittee conversation, and we'll decide if we're going to have them or not, what makes sense. Did I miss anything? Dane?
I think you covered it.
Patty told us something that I can't see what it is, sorry.
Patty, was there anything you needed to add to that?
If you want to send us in chat, Patty, we can hit it afterwards. All right.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Thanks for that update. The, Nelson is not here. Typically, we will have a city commission report from our commissioner advisor, Nelson Andrews. He is not able to be on the call today, but we have our, and also Linda Elmlinger, who is on our board and represents the Parks Board, is not on the call. But we do have our Planning Commission advisor, John Vitucci. John, do you have anything to add to the conversation?
Yes, Linda. The city keeps on growing and growing. More people want to put in new subdivisions. The latest one that we talked about last week was a rezoning property located on 9230 Smyrna Road. They're going to add 21 new homes in that subdivision and probably get started there within the next year or so. So city keeps on growing.
Are they going to tear down trees?
Quite a few trees, young lady. If you drive down Old Smyrna Road, you'll see how beautiful that is today. But they've laid out two plans for us, one where we're going to try and save as many trees as possible, and then they've got another proposal that, you know, was somewhat questionable. But we're choosing the one that's going to leave a bunch of the trees up. But Old Smyrna Road is a beautiful road, but another 21 homes are going to be going in that area. That's all I've got.
Thanks, John.
Last question. On Saturday, are you going to, how many of us, board commission, or how many of us should be there on Saturday with the presentation?
Sunday. You mean for the distribution of the trees?
No, I know we're going to be there Sunday, but on Saturday with the presentation with the city, with the mayor and everybody.
So that's actually a virtual presentation, and we've already shot the video for that. So it's not going to be an in-person event this year, unfortunately, due to COVID.
All right, thank you.
But that does bring up one thing. If you all, as Tree Board members for Sunday, if you have it, please wear some green. Wear some green, because you will be, Deanna, we will be shooting some live video. Is that correct? Yeah, so dress up really pretty, comb your hair, and wear some green.
I think, oh.
Go ahead, Patty.
I think finally, there's two computers, and it's a bit of a mess, but I think set there. Did we get the okay to send out our HOA letter? It kept going back and forth, and apparently this board needs to okay it. The EAB board was good with it.
Did I send that out to the group to review last time?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, Lynn, that was an item that the EAB was going to bring up to see if this board wanted to approve that letter to send.
Yeah, I see in the minutes that it was, yeah, that you did, and you did send it out. Did anyone have any questions about it? I thought it was. does every, did, did anyone have any questions about it? Um, I thought it was, it was fine. Um, it, it had been revised quite, quite a few times, so edited quite a few times, so I think it was in its complete state. So, um, if there's no questions about it, um, do I hear a motion to approve that HOV, HOA letter?
I'm motion, I'm motion to approve the HOA letter, and that we see about how we send it out to all the different organizations.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. Okay. Is there any, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, um, that we send out the HOA letter as, as in its final form. Um, so that, without further discussion, uh, let's vote on it. All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, that letter is approved to send out.
Lynn?
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to ask, but it's okay. I just, uh, if you're a process for saying, you know, how's that clear Google send it, and what the distribution would be, we're supposed to go to HOA management companies, and HOA, so I don't know, uh,
Well, yeah, you all can talk about that, I think, as part of your committee. Committee.
The city, the city also has a, uh, distribution list of HOA contacts. So, we were, you know, that's something that the city can send out on behalf of this board. Um, we could also, uh, post it to Nextdoor. That's something that, um, would be helpful to Nextdoor to get to residents. And then any other ways that you guys think of how it should go out.
Great. Great.
Patty or John, or whoever wrote it, we're interested in taking that. We'll make sure we don't, it doesn't get lost again. We dropped it here. Somebody's gonna take ownership of that.
Yeah. I'll do that.
Yes, Patty.
Um, the other thing is, um, I don't know if Brian was aware with the t-shirts, they already have been ordered, and they should be arriving the 23rd.
I, I, I think you all were gonna have a discussion about that after our meeting.
Okay, and, and and I had one other thing. Did we have an extra, another position on the tree board?
Deanna, what is the status of that?
We do, we have, I believe, uh, two or three people who've applied, and I believe it may be appointed at one of the next city commission meetings, but we have a couple of people who have applied.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, and that was to fill, uh, Jared's unfulfilled seat.
Is Linda leading also? Will that be an open position?
I, I couldn't understand what you were saying, Erin.
I said, is Linda still being on the board, or is she going to, um, lead off?
Um, as far as I know, the, uh, when I discussed with her last, she was going to, she is still on the board officially. Uh, but she was going to talk with someone else on the Parks Board that she felt it was time for someone else to learn a little more about our tree board and, and have a different representative sign. But at this point, she is still officially on the board. And I'm sure she'll be discussing that with, uh, Deanna. Is there any further business that we need to discuss this morning? Speak now.
Hey, Lynn, did you, did you wanna take kind of a consensus vote on people if, um, if you feel comfortable voting and, um, meeting in person in April or remote? Did you wanna quiz anyone on that?
Um, well, yeah, uh, my, of course, my feeling is that, um, we should be in person, but, uh, we are going to, you know, certainly honor a consensus of what, what people feel. So, what, what does everybody wanna do next month?
I'm fine with in-person.
I'll do it in-person if we're outdoors, but not indoors.
Okay, well, maybe we'll, um, try to, that, that's a good point, Dane. Um, why don't I try to, um, set up, hey, Erin, is the, is it time now that we can reserve the pavilion? Is it, does it start yet?
Reservations, um, for Brentwood citizens. I think it opens up to the general public in April. Is that not right, Deanna?
Okay.
Well, yeah, but since we're bored, I mean, I'm pretty sure as long as it's not being used, you know, at 7:30, it shouldn't be a problem, so we can check on the Granny White, uh, Park Pavilion if, if everyone feels comfortable with meeting outdoors. The weather should be nice.
That'd be great. Yeah, let's, let's.
I find that it's really hard to hear, especially with masks on that pavilion. Might we change to a different pavilion? That we might be, uh, like a little bit, or not necessarily close, a bit smaller. In a different park, possibly?
Do you wanna go Smith Park instead?
Smith River Crockett.
Smith Park, is that okay for everyone?
Yeah.
Smith Park seems to work really well, that pavilion there. So, yeah, let's, let's do that then, Erin. That's a good, good point. It is hard to hear at, at the, uh, other pavilion. Alright, and that meeting is, uh, our next meeting is on April?
April 20th?
April 20th. Same time, 7:30. Um, if there's no further business, um, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Patty, second. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, I will see you all on Sunday, the 21st, uh, about 12:30 at the Brentwood Library.
Thank you. See you there.
With your green on.